...of America and to be the light for his fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening.
Good morning.
First time is to approve the agenda this morning.
I move we approve the amended agenda as printed.
Thank you Carl, your second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and we have minutes from April twenty fifth. Should I motion approve the minutes?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, very good. Is there anybody with general public concern this morning that's not on the agenda that needs to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. We'll wait just a couple minutes and let Rick and Trish get ready, but at eight thirty six. The first thing down here, Bill, let's go down to the approval of an hire of zoning, safety, HIPAA, environmental protection employee effective July first, twenty sixteen, at the previous rate of eight thousand dollars. As you all know, we went through the process, tried to find somebody to separate these out with and add the health inspection of the Board of Health, and we had a process and we had somebody picked out, and things changed, that did not work, one of our candidates again was Melanie Larson, and after further consideration, we decided to stay with the Oklahoma's on the, on the health.
On a sanitary.
Sanitary, help me out, yeah, please. Sanitary position, we're gonna leave that the way it was, that seemed to resonate well with the Board of Health, and they like the establishment we've had with them, and the fact that now their calls are being directed over there to their office and not ran all over the place. So we're gonna leave the sanitary position alone, the way it was, and we're just gonna put back into the position for each other items, same dollar amount that Pat was doing it for. And I've talked to Melanie, she was more comfortable doing this and taking on the sanitary position on top of this, so, that being said.
I think it's a very good idea because we'll have a contact, we'll have an office, people know where they are, and it's gonna work out well, I think. Five days a week, we'll have somebody anywhere to get a hold of.
Right, and in this case, now somebody can be available, like Carl says, forty hours a week versus, you know, maybe eight hours coming in with the other, it just didn't seem to work out.
Gives her a chance to stay with doing what she's been doing and get her feet, yeah.
And I think she's by July first, she's comfortable with her new job, and Paul will be working with her in some of these.
There's no next step.
Yeah, and you know, as far as the safety stuff, too, that'll be through Paul, so she'll have time to get on board with that, so. This time I'd ask for motion to approve that position with Melanie Larson.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thinking, would you like to set a date for the final budget amendment?
Yep, I know Paul has some changes that he'll need to do, and there'll probably be a few other small things that he'll need to do, so I'm looking at May twenty third, at eight forty AM.
I move we set May, uh, May twenty third, eight forty for budget amendment.
Your second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we can do the one more item.
It puts a lot of pressure that we're gonna go right in.
No, we're not gonna, no, we're not gonna do committee report.
No, I know, because ten minutes after the meeting starts that morning, we're gonna go right on it.
Right on the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, and we had talked to Kevin Tiller last week when he was up about the eminent domain board, and he said he would agree to be on that, so, this time I'd like somebody to make a move.
I'll make a motion to approve Kevin Deli-Tiller as a member of the Board of Eminent Domain, owner operator.
Your second?
I'll second.
Mark can take that one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, this time.
We related that point, Jerry, I talked, uh, more, I mo-talked to a person, moed. Oh, good. Thought we had him committed, and finally they dropped out. So we told somebody from the boat area that probably lives in the Cerven city, so we're still looking.
Okay.
He sounded real receptive when I talked to him, you know. Said he was already on two committee committees, so at the last minute, he said, "See you guys."
Okay, well, just to ask, so, we'll keep trying, if we can, we'll try and let Peggy know since she got on the agenda ahead of time to give her the vote, and so. Okay, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to go into drainage.
So moved.
Your second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
We're officially in drainage.
Is that why we have all these guests?
I think so.
Good to see Mike again.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we lost him somewhere.
Yeah, maybe Mike brought us money.
Well, we can see, just seeing his presence, maybe, yeah.
Any problems between here and Des Moines this morning? I heard him talk about on the radio.
No, it wasn't too bad. I mean, there's a little bit in Des Moines, but by the time I left.
They must've got some big rain down, playing here in Des Moines yesterday when I went down there, went through Box home, and it was clear out to the center line in town.
Just, it didn't rain heavy, but it just rained.
A lot.
A lot.
Well, you know it rains a lot when you got ducks nesting behind the sheriff's department. You got a nest of melons behind the sheriff's department.
In the middle of town. Is that diverted acres or?
I don't, they got, they had a pile of construction material left over, and they went to move it, and there's a nest, a melon nesting under it. So she had, like you said, thirteen or fourteen eggs.
Oh, man.
Well, this morning, our first time is DD number thirty-three, Branch D, and we were to have a scheduled preliminary engineering report hearing this morning, so we ran into some complications and asked what other information needed to be brought forward, so, Trish, you wanna kinda point out where we're at, or what your conversation was with my ass last week?
Um, I did talk to Kent, and we went over some of those things in the engineering report. I found a discrepancy in some numbers that didn't total right, so, and I also expressed concern from landowners on the open ditch portion, on how that was gonna work, and I asked if he had spoken to the landowners, and he had, I believe it was that day, or shortly before, and how to resolve the water that comes from the northwest across County K, and that is a huge problem in this area, and I don't know if it was added to the answer or taking care of remedying either of these options, so, I want to have it postponed so we can get some more definite answers before we go forward.
And they felt that was the right thing to do, too, I assume?
Yes.
And personally, you got a chance to talk with one of the guys last week?
Well, no, it was a week before, not a week, okay. Well, it really, he was in, he hadn't really looked at it over.
He hadn't, he hadn't physically looked it over at that moment?
Well, he said he had, but.
Okay.
So, it's kinda strange. I said, "Well, this open ditch you're proposing, well, there's still a little water pond there and here," so I just meandered down through the field.
Okay.
I said, "If it's that bad, we'll tile it out." Well, I guess you could.
And you hadn't sent out any notices yet, so we wouldn't have been ready for that anyway.
I didn't send, he wants me to send the full engineering report when I do it.
What, he does?
Mm-hmm.
Did he move it back forty days then?
Hmm.
Twenty days?
He wants to send it out to everybody a copy of this, is that what you're saying?
Considering we don't have that many landowners.
Okay, sure.
And I want to check on, probably with Doug's strike, on the, how we handle the water that comes from the northwest that really isn't in the specific lateral or branch.
Okay.
Different one, but it's coming down, can they be annexed or doubly assessed, or?
That's a good point.
I mean.
We talked at the end of the day, we should ask him that.
'Cause that water is definitely flowing down that way.
A tremendous amount of it.
Yeah, a lot of that, I'm sure.
And Kent didn't think we could do that, but I'm pretty sure.
Have any of you guys seen the report yet? Have you guys seen the initial report yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, what do you got?
Yeah, I've seen it. Haven't had a lot of time to look at it.
No. So, we're not gonna be able to answer a lot of questions about them, and go to the additional questions you guys might have, that you're concerned about, or thinking about.
Will this be reclassified once this project's done, or how?
Well, that's what, in the report, it says that they were gonna use the classification that came from Jacobson-Luster Guard, which was done in, oh, a couple of years ago, three years ago, maybe, um, but if we're gonna try to do something with the water, and to the northwest, it maybe have to reclassify in that instance.
Well, yeah, if they're brought into it, they're gonna have to re- that'll have to be considered.
And I definitely think it should be.
Yeah, I agree with you, when you go out and look at the, the way the land, a lot of water comes from the northwest, that isn't included in the watershed right now.
That's right.
So I don't know. He, I asked him how he was gonna accommodate for all this water, and he said, you know, "You hear about that open ditch?" And then he said, "It's really not an open ditch, it's not that deep, it's not a grassed ditch, it's farmable, so it's like a little waterway," and he thought, he told me farm perpendicular to it.
Yeah.
I don't know how that's gonna work.
But I don't think you're really worth a favor with that type of situation, you know, because there, I didn't think many of them have talked to a lot, so that's not gonna fly all the way. But you were more interested, you know, we were more interested in the initial efficiency, basically, than going that route.
I think you're starting.
And you know.
Ron, you got thoughts on that, too, or?
Yeah, I agree, I don't think, yeah, open ditch is gonna do.
Very good.
No.
I didn't think we liked the option either, but they had invented something different we hadn't seen before. So, they might be leaning towards the end core vision as, as a more viable, with the intake larger, they, I agree with that good point on that, too, he had some up shoulder this morning.
Yeah, then five and a half foot intake should hopefully be.
But it still doesn't stop the water from traversing across, everybody.
No, but if they're.
Not gonna stop it, but it'd be nice to get it at the point five of the way.
Well, there's points where you can put it in where it will keep it from, you know, turning into surface water, you know, completely going across, through the, under the road is where it gets bad, too, and, you can get them in the ditch, even, that's where they've done that before, they make a big difference.
When you come up with a five foot intake, do you need a plant, grass or something around there to keep, help it keep those cornstalks off the?
That helps a lot, if somebody will do that, or if they're in the ditch, you know, you do have that much grass.
If you farm right up to the edge, it would.
Well, those I'm thinking of, right at the bottom of the ditch.
Okay, okay.
I mean, that, they've done that way, Rick has put a couple of those in. Okay, so I think we needed more information, we'll give them time to regroup, we can talk to them, and they've got your ideas, and I think, maybe Trish can, we'll get back to Doug to find out about surface water, and how about annex in some of that ground if it's possible, how to look at that, so. So, what do you want for the date?
Should we choose June sixth?
What date you say?
June sixth.
Sure, that gives, and how many, how soon we got, the mailings out, forty days on that too? Twenty on the mailing, okay. June sixth? So you'll have time to get mailings out then, once you know exactly who to send it to.
Yeah, she's sent, yeah.
Is June sixth enough? This probably is gonna end up being towards fall project, oh, yeah, twenty probably that might with funding, I mean, I just think now that we're getting in this deep, there's no need to start tearing into this till we get, so maybe you better split that out there.
A little higher.
Yeah, for the bag, let's not get caught again after rescheduling.
Well, yeah.
How about June twenty, or what's fourteen, June twenty, that'd be better?
Yeah.
Is that okay? June twenty, I mean, it's gonna make a lot of difference now, alright, let's do that, let's make sure you get what you need, and maybe we'll talk to him, maybe he'll call us to talk to us in the meantime, or might he give us a phone conversation sometime, just saying what, what, what he's gonna adapt to for change.
We got a whole bunch of hearings that day.
Several hearings.
On the twenty, yes, we got about five of them.
Every fifteen minutes starting at eight thirty.
Yeah, let's not do it then.
June twenty seventh.
What do you want?
Twenty seventh?
Alright. June twenty seventh, sorry. What time?
Nine.
Nine o'clock?
There's no time to get organized.
That's true, alright.
Does that, how does that work for you, Mike? I'm, how, how do they submit a different proposal to you, or?
I just, I know, whatever the updated report.
We're still gonna use basic enough facts, and then it should be adding maybe possibly acres, or putting in some different drains.
Yeah.
You've worked with them before in some of these ag wells, then?
Um, yeah.
Okay, you know Kent, you know.
Yeah, I know Kent, yeah, but I've worked with Kent on, on.
So if we had him call you to let you know, or he'll let you know when the changes come?
This is thirty-three.
Yes.
Well, I think we went right, and I think I'm glad, I'm glad you got a chance to talk to him, physically talk to him, out there, and go over some of these things with him, so.
No, I don't know, I'd like to have a little more conversation with them, and landowners, just to.
How about if we would schedule a mini work session before that, you know, in the next few weeks after we get the planning done here, just where they come up and you guys come in and just go over some of these, make sure we're all on the same page, and they didn't miss anything, we did some of that last week, and I, I think it adds a lot of valuable help to make sure they're on the same page of what you're trying to get across to them, not just to us. I, I think it was a great idea.
I think it's a good idea, get the people who farm the land talking with them, so they, 'cause they're the ones who know how the water runs.
So let's have you get on Kent, tell her we're gonna reschedule the hearing for June twenty seventh at nine AM, and ask him to work something out, maybe right at the, oh, third or fourth week of May, kind of have the landowners meet with us, and a few of them, you guys that wanna meet with us, and just go over some preliminary stuff, so make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, I think that's.
I think it works out great.
Very good, I mean, I think the timing was bad, you know, because landowners were out of the area, he didn't get a chance to.
He doesn't know the landowners like Rick did, so it's not, it's, alright, so I'd entertain a motion to move that hearing, preliminary report, hearing date for DD thirty-three, Branch D, to June twenty seventh at nine AM, is there a motion?
So moved.
Your second? Any more? All in favor?
Alright.
We have some discussion we have, we have a way of notifying them, so they know when we're gonna work session on it.
Mm-hmm.
Say in May, so you get a hold of everybody.
Right.
So be sure to know when it's happening.
Just, by the time of Kent, when it's open, when he can come up, we can do it on a, we can do it under our Monday meeting, you know, later on, you know, at eleven o'clock or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Should work.
Talk to the other owners, maybe that needs to be notified.
Right, that would be good, too.
Yeah, 'cause the area that you're looking at, and they need to be there, too.
Definitely, they need to be invited to it.
Can you invite me to that meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'd like to have you make another trip from Des Moines.
Yeah, it's a nice trip.
It's a nice time of year. Okay, that's all on DD thirty-three?
Good.
Thank you, guys, coming in. We'll make sure to let you know when we're gonna do that, try towards the third, fourth week of May.
That's okay.
On Monday. Oh, anything else out of the ordinary before we get into this part of it, Rick? Is that your shoe, repairs are going on? Do you have a copy of this again? I lost my last, you know, gave this one to someone.
Is Rick here?
Yeah. Well, I haven't come in. Maybe I'll have you make some of those copies.
Okay.
For all of us. Okay, obviously, if Rick wants to come in, we've got some other things we can talk about quickly, before nine o'clock, 'cause we're waiting for Mark. Rick, come on in. We're early for Mark, but.
Mike's here.
Oh, Mark's here.
Oh, good.
While we can, I don't, anybody else that needs to be here on time? Let's talk about a couple quick things first, it's obvious we're at nine. Pete Krueger called me yesterday, he finds out Gilmore City, then he grabbed a gate, said water's bad on the east side.
Yeah, yes. I was came through there this morning.
Ask Mark to take a look.
Bruce, did you grab?
Water's here up to the foundations on the east side there.
Yeah.
So it's worse on the east side of town, not quite as.
I thought it was. Yeah, I did, too. There was, there was some ponding still the other day before the last rain, not so bad, but now with the last one, more areas filled up again.
So we are not gonna be ready for the hearing on that, on the sixth, thanks Bruce, on the sixteenth, correct?
Well, we, isn't that the annexation hearing, though, and, well, and?
Both, isn't it?
Both, yeah.
Both, yeah.
We need the annexation, we can get care of that, right?
Yeah, 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 I think it'd be good to get that taken care of, anyway.
But.
What can we do to caper air it, to get those people out? If you want, you can want to get a boat and get out of town. Getting the pump back in is about all you can do at this point, 'cause the water level's so high, and you haven't got all our water yet, I mean, we're, our.
We don't want it.
I know, I know.
It's gonna get worse for them before it gets.
Yeah, Doug Marshall wondered if we could go in there, he thought that location, you know, Rick, when he walked down in there, and we thought the water was taking where the originally had opened.
Yeah.
Cut that tree out, and I hadn't seen that.
'Cause we're, we're pumping water from the street intake, a hundred fifty feet to the next hole.
Yeah.
And that hole was lower than where we were pumping it out.
Yes.
It's taking it down there.
Yeah.
He wondered if from that point, going back north, if we shouldn't try and open up a few places where there's trees, to get those rips out of there and see if it'd work, is that feasible, or would that open up the pressure, or would it start?
Boiling up there.
It'd boil out, that's, that's my concern, if you open it up, is it just gonna make another big pond.
Well, and, and I talked to him a little bit about that, and, basically, when they were down there digging it up, they stopped as soon as they got deep enough that the water was bubbling up.
They did a check.
Yeah, when they did the check, yeah, so.
In the sand you're digging into?
Well, not, the depths they were at, they weren't into sand yet, but as you get a little bit deeper, you'll get into the sand, and then you have the issues, yeah, it's, I.
But then that's, the other problem is, we don't particularly know how many leach fields are in there, we don't know how many.
That's why I really think if we get out on the edge of that field and just take a dang trench. Yeah, um, I mean, I don't have to go.
Get rid of the water, but maybe.
Get out of there as deep as the tile, just get it down to, so you're two, three feet above the tile, and let the water run down.
And it might be some relief to get it far enough that it will get into the tile and get away.
Uh-huh.
The problem was, it looked like they were pumping into the one that would take it, the pipe would take it, but the groundwater was still high there, so, the tile was working, but the groundwater was still very, very high, um.
So we don't really have any good ideas on this?
Uh, we'll be down here this week, let me, let me do more with those elevations and see if there isn't something, 'cause it's horrible, I can't imagine what they're going through, I, one of the houses there, I came through this morning, inch and a half or two inch pipe, just blowing water out in their yard from sump pump.
And they're running twenty-four, seven.
Yeah.
Some of them got two, three pumps going.
Yep, I've heard as high as four, in some of these basements, to try and keep the water down and keep the walls from collapsing, so.
So you take a look, and talk to Doug again?
I'll talk to Doug, I'll get Jason B in the area, um, we'll all take a look, quick look, see if there isn't something, um, for some relief, 'cause it's, it's, it's horrible.
But, you know, we haven't had a big rain yet.
Oh, no, no. No, we got.
We get a lot of rain in May, June.
Mm-hmm. Oh, you guys are dry compared to us, um, we've had over four inches here in just a short time.
And you can dig a trench in the mud up there, if you're gonna, you have to dry it some before you dig.
Oh, no, they, there's, most of the ground we're talking about.
It's high enough.
Yeah, it's high enough that you could do something, yeah. It's surprising, it's surprising how that little knob just south of the road, how much higher it is than where we start and where we end even, but, um, we're not talking to happen to anything real wide or anything, just has to be able to carry some water, get it away, so.
Alright, you guys kinda see.
We'll see what we can talk with, yet this week, for recommendation.
Getting the pumps going again, or?
I'll make calls today, um, I, yeah, I, I think they need to have it going, they've set that, put that box in there for power.
Right there.
Yeah, um, I'll catch Melody, too.
Yeah, talk to her once, if she's ready for a rest, 'cause they may have talked to her, not us, too.
Right.
About the homeowners.
Right, yeah.
So we're gonna leave May sixteenth for the annexation part of that, do we need, you wanna set a date yet on the hearing for this one? Eight, it's eighty-four, isn't it?
Yeah, eighty-four.
Or do you wanna, you wanna wait and come back next week with some ideas on that? I don't, I mean, if we set it out to June twenty-seventh, is that far enough with this other meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, we ain't got that many people contacting us.
No, no.
Yeah.
I mean, even with, talent is not that many.
Well, and just in case, just in case we have to get doing something before fall, I mean, this could be a fall project, or maybe something maybe is just getting ready to.
Well, it's almost impossible right now.
That's true.
I mean, you.
Oh, yeah, 'cause you open it up, it's gonna be a disaster.
Yeah.
Let's set the meeting on the twenty-seventh, so we stay on the task where we're supposed to be, and then, you know, maybe by then, we'll see what the weather is, if it's been really wet, we know we're gonna have to wait, but, you know, if it's, I don't know, in the meantime, we'll try and work on some other possible stuff.
Yes, yes, oh, yeah.
For other decisions, I guess.
You're talking June?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't want to do any of that, if we, I mean, I, we didn't do any good.
No, it isn't, it isn't gonna do any good.
Since we have the other meeting, well, no, we don't wanna go at the same time, but we can do it, let's do it first in July, first even July, then maybe we'll see if it dried out, if it got wet, next week after twenty-seventh.
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July.
No, it won't be there.
Yeah.
I'll do it the week after.
Hello?
Let's do, okay.
July?
Yeah, that is, that is, that'll work.
Uh, I'm gonna do Project Aware with DNR this year again, and that's.
What about June eleventh?
Yeah.
So that's when you're all the seven?
Oh, sure.
But are you rescheduling for this week at all?
Hmm?
Are you gonna have a different meeting, or just get completed?
Oh.
I don't know how you want it.
We don't know.
Couldn't meet on the Tuesday.
As of this clean week.
Well, I said.
Won't be.
What's, uh...
Well, I guess it'll be the eighteenth too, I mean, it's really...
You have other hearings on the twentieth, but is it, you just don't wanna put that much that day?
Well, yeah, you know, we could, it was just fifteen minutes.
Yeah, those are gonna be quick ones.
Let's do it then, I know we're getting way out there.
That'll give us July and August as far as getting work done, which maybe the driest will have.
That's right, it might happen, need to happen in August.
Yeah. So you're going at the end of the nine-ten, is what the last schedule, or nine-twenty-five, excuse me?
Nine or ten-twenty-five?
I got nine-twenty-five.
Nine-twenty-five, D113 reclass.
No, that's the last, one thirteen.
So we have fifteen minutes there in the schedule, something like that, ten?
Did we do fifteen, or ten minutes?
Uh, we did, nine-ten was one oh-six, and nine-twenty-five is one thirteen on my book.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Uh, eight-fifty is thirty-nine.
All right, so...
The ten, it looks like ten or fifteen.
Fifteen, I think it looks like.
All right, let's just do that then.
Let's go to nine forty-eight?
Nine forty.
All right, that'll work, nine forty?
Yep. So that'll be the hearing on the preliminary engineering report.
Correct.
And that's eighty?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
Okay, so those are both taken care of now. All right, it's nine o'clock, we're close, Mark, after many trips, we've got the base, we've kinda got this done, so... Uh, I'll make a couple comments, and then we'll just turn it over. We, um, we had a plan earlier, I guess, some different discussions about this, and we had NRCS had come out and looked at some different designs, and Mark had talked to them, I hadn't personally talked to anybody from NRCS. And then there seemed to be confusion on where and how we were gonna do this, and Mark had come out, and I think, everybody made it, I think, that day. Went out to Mark's place, showed us the area, and we talked about different things and ideas he had, where we, what we were talking with Rick, so... Today we'd like, and we got Mike up here too, which is great, this is gonna help us some of this on ideas too, but at this point, I'll turn it back to Rick, and we can kinda run through kinda what's going on, or where we at, and kinda what we're looking at for this type of pond.
Yeah, and we'll get as specific as we can, but we, we're still missing a couple answers a little bit here. Um, we've worked up the final pay estimates for the materials on the job, we've worked up the final pay estimate for the installation, we've gotten them to the supplier and the contractor to work through quantities, that's gonna help us determine where we are for sure on final dollars. Um, and I mentioned this when we met Friday, but Cree-Tex has admitted some issues with their record-keeping on materials. Yes, finally, Friday, um, he said, "We're finding a few things," he didn't say anything about a problem with our quantities yet. Um, so, but they kept, and he did apologize for the letter they sent out demanding payment.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, um, he said they never should've done that, they, they knew we were working on this, um, but, yeah...
New generated, right?
Yeah.
New ownership?
Yes, new ownership, now it's a worldwide company, and Cree-Tex was big enough by itself, but now it's worldwide, so... What Cree-Tex is facing is they've said to the parent company that bought them, "We've got this eighty thousand dollars that we're gonna get yet for..."
They didn't have it, right?
No, and they were way wrong, so, um, the, the good part of all this is, it looks like we're very close to the planned quantities on all of this. I mean, there were little things we added, um, so that'll be resolved hopefully in the next few days. Um, I was glad Mike was here today, um, just, I know it was for other things in general, but the other, one other big item is the rock that we had to use on the job to get the stable trench, and it, it looks at least favorable for participation by the state on that. That was our big hang-up as far as dollars.
That were left.
That were left, yes, so that, that is a positive happening again. Now, I think we're gonna be okay with location that we were talking about, or you've talked about for pond. I wanna work with you though, because we need to get access to that pond in the future for cleaning. So whether we just designate an access route, um...
I guess I don't care how you guys get to it, you gotta drive across the hayfield, drive across the hayfield.
Okay, well, and I, but I'd like to have something worked out with you, so people know, I guess.
Okay, well, that's fine, I have no problem with that.
Okay, we can do that. Now, I believe the, I hope the only issue we have is the size of this. We, we're gonna build it the size we needed for retention, for detaining water, and for settling out, uh, the, some soil. So it's, it's not gonna be much different in size than we had before, now, I don't know if there's... Um, one thing I was thinking about coming down, is that something you wanna make bigger and go after some NRCS money or something, so that could delay things longer. The other good thing is Denver Underground is still wanting to do that work, so...
Okay.
We may have to get some additional topography, and I, I have to see what we have. I don't think we got far enough down to take care of, and it looks like, um, NRCS is a little limited as far as what they got for topography.
Oh, okay.
But our guys would take less than a day down there to get that, um, so, um...
So what are you thinking, the height and the outlet?
Yeah, yeah, we'll wanna, we'll wanna get the field to property, so we know exactly what we're dealing with, and seeing if we can still work with the soils. Now, we had some waste before, because it was some excavation, not a, not as much filling as there was excavation. We haven't run quantities, because we don't have the topo for that area that you're talking about. Um, if we have extra material, is there somewhere we can go with it? You can talk about that, I guess, um, if you have a spot somewhere we can put it, that'll help the cost of the thing.
I got a question.
Yeah.
What extra material are you talking?
Well, we ended up, well, on the other site, we ended up having to dig out material to make it wider.
To make it wider, yeah, where it was narrower, we had to widen it out to get the volume we needed,
so it actually, that was more dirt than it took to make the dam.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Where's that stockpile at?
We haven't done that.
Oh, you haven't dug?
So by moving this down, you...
Why can't you put it in the dam?
Why can't you put it in the dam?
Well, I guess it's a matter of, to me, that makes, to me, that makes sense, you gotta haul it from here, over there, make a pile, why don't you just make the dam taller with the excess material?
It's...
Or is it suitable material? Well, we think it, we think it will mostly be suitable material. Um, it's a matter of the cost of compacting it into the dam compared to dumping it somewhere is higher. The structure would be higher, um, I guess that's, I mean, we can evaluate what that is, um...
Well, you're only gonna do so much anyway, aren't you?
Yeah, that's...
You've got the height of what the dam's gonna be, and that's probably what we're gonna end up paying for to do it.
That's, yeah.
Mark wanted to increase the height, right? I mean, I would assume that that would be on their bill.
Well, I guess, yeah, it won't, let us, let's come back with this one more time, because we'll get the topography and work out that design, um, and see what the dirt situation is, so we really know what we're talking about.
Yeah, you can get...
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm hoping this...
I have a couple of questions, is what's the flow on that thing right now? Is there a lot of water coming out of that?
No, not, I didn't look again this morning, but I looked when I was down Friday, I mean, it was...
Blown out of there.
So is it, is it blown out?
There's some water coming out of there.
Well, I mean, it's a lot of flow, but it's, yeah, is it like eighty percent full, ninety percent full, the pipe, twenty percent, twenty percent? It's not, it's... The way it, it looks like a lot of water, because we got blocks in there, so it, yeah.
Right.
Turns it, so, but it wasn't, yeah, I, I mean, we can get a measurement on it, but I, Friday, there was, I mean, it looked like it was a fair amount, because it was so turbulent, but then it was just barely moving once it left that area.
Well, that was my other question.
Yeah.
If that thing's running, and depending on where this dam is down extreme, it'll never affect our road, right?
Right.
Is this thing backed up far enough that it was up onto our, up against our road and watching?
Will be below the road level, yeah.
My question, I'm not missing here.
The outlet that's there will be free, it'll be open at all times, that's, that's part of the control we'll have to have, is to keep that so that it can flow. Um, yeah, we should get a, a measurement on that actual depth, if, if there's not too much turbulence there to tell, because we've got offset blocks poured in that apron to dissipate the energy, and then riprap too, to help it, to try and dissipate more energy, so that by the time it leaves there, the velocity is not high. Um, and I, I was actually hoping there was more coming out, so I could see how it was gonna react, but you get a, if you get a big rain here, I will make a point to get there and see what's happening. Now, there's five locations where we were gonna put surface inlets, and we put these, um, clean water air, uh, area drains in. That'll help moderate the flow, it'll be...
Slow it down.
Slow it down, it'd be, go a little longer, but it will be less than if we had surface intakes on those.
You got a problem with building a bigger dam and retaining more water, and then you get a gully washer, and that's already full?
It'll be, there'll be enough freeboard there, that's, that's part of the design, there'll be enough freeboard there to take the surge, and then it will drop down again to that level. That's why we call it detaining the water, it just slows it down, is what it does, so... Let's, let's, I wish we could be real specific today, but let's...
So when am I gonna be able to see your guys out there, topo, and that, do the...
Um, I hope this week yet.
This week?
Yeah, it, it will be no longer than next week, I mean, we, we just gotta, we gotta bring this to a head and know exactly what we're dealing with, and say, "Here it is." So I'll, I'll be talking to him, um, Jason, who'll coordinate this, uh, he isn't available today, his dad, my partner, had open-heart surgery Friday, so he's babysitting him for today, but, uh, he's, we have our one summer guy on now, and we're bringing our other guy who's gonna be permanent on a week from today, so... That's why I'm saying no longer than sometime next week, because we'll have our two extra people with us. Um, so I'm hoping at this week, no later than next week.
So if you're gonna design it so it's just enough to hold the water, you're gonna have to let me know what that extra's gonna be to raise the water?
Yeah, yeah, and we'll see, what we'll analyze is, are we gonna have extra material, or we can just put in the structure, in the dam? And mostly what we're doing is just raising the one pipe, then we're not talking much cost, so, um, yeah. Let's, let's get that far absolutely as soon as we can, we get the field work this week. I, um, our engineer that designs the ponds, I don't think he has a lot of backlog, I mean, I think he can pull this in and do it in a day or two. So we're not gonna tie up a lot there.
Are you, we'll do this, is there, are you gonna have rock in there too, to hold that, or do you have...
We may have a spillway with some overflow with some rock, but otherwise, um, probably not.
Be earthened?
Be earthened with grass, yeah.
No metal, no con, or no, um, hang wall there as far as...
Right, right, yeah, we'll have an inlet structure with a pipe that'll go under at the base of the structure, um, size all that according to flows, and, yeah, he's been through this.
Mike back and forth on this, see where we have, might change that, what's available for material.
Yes, yes, so, and we've had the, the metal pipe structure guy call us about once a month. Are you ready to do this yet?
Denver wants to do it.
Yeah, Denver wants to do it, um, so we'll try and evaluate all that, just very quickly here, but while we give you that much information, um, we'll look back at specifics real soon.
Okay, now, um, have you thought much about keeping the mud out of it?
I'm hoping that we can work the design so that the upper part of this will slow it down, and then that's all we need to clean out in the future. But we, we're gonna have to do easement and access, so we can get in there and do work in the future, so... I'm gonna try and incorporate some settling right away, so that the bulk of the pond doesn't need anything for thirty or forty years, you know, kind of thing. But the upper end will need, will have to do something with, try and clean some out in the future. We'll work with that, that'll be all of what we'll try and put together here, so...
Well, on the other side of that, where that drain was, or that grate was pushed over?
Oh, yeah.
Aren't we gonna, wouldn't that be beneficial to try to put some, a grass strip in there to...
So the cornstalk?
Yeah.
Keep the stuff from...
Oh, yeah, on the, on the other side of the road?
On the downside.
Yeah, it'd absolutely be good, um, is, would that be in areas around?
It's very close to it, yeah.
Is there, is there an area that they could, I wanna say, pay for establishing just a kind of a buffer before that structure?
Ain't gonna do any good, when they get heavy rain, that's...
When that water's coming that hard?
Yeah, comes off that side.
You got terraces up in there, but the farm above me, they don't have any terraces, and they won't put any in. I got farm over terraces all the way up there.
Well, you can get a lot of cornstalks coming down through there.
Oh, I'm sure, plug it up.
You hear, I mean, if you get to, there was a grate there where you're talking, and I just never got around to putting one on top of it. But I need to do it.
So, 'cause I mean, that's an issue, this minimum tillage, you get so much cornstalks when you get heavy rains.
You're gonna get cornstalks, it doesn't matter what you got.
Well, then a flat grate, can we put a pyramid-type thing, so the corn, you know, that's hazardous right now with somebody falling down through there.
Well, you're talking about building, you know, the cover needs to be...
The cover, where we walked there, the four-foot hole.
Right, right, well, it's, it's slid back or something.
There's like a forty-eight-inch tile underneath the road there, that's wide open, it's gonna go right through there. We haven't even talked about that, you're just talking about the one that goes down.
Yeah.
There's a cover right beside there.
Yeah, you're gonna need stocks in either one.
They're, they're gonna go through it, a long way or not.
Uh-huh, but could we slow, stop some of it with grass?
No, I mean, you can't believe how much water comes down, if you get torrent rain.
I, yeah, grass is, if you end up with some type of structure with a fence or whatever, that's something needs to be cleaned off constantly. Um, with grass, you have to re, you have to clean that out and replant sometimes.
Well, but, we went over to Pokie.
Smother it out, that.
That, over when we drove over and looked at that, those retaining areas over there in Pokie, they have it set up like when we walked out there.
Right, right.
I guess, I'm just curious to see how, something like that, but I don't know whether we can come up with the money to buy it for...
Yeah, if you're talking structures out there, you, you add up in funds real quickly, um, and...
It used to be that was so bad, that what they put their other cover in, and wash the road down.
That's what I...
That is really...
Yeah.
Then they put another cover in there, that big.
Thirty, that's, thirty, forty, thirty-two, forty-two? Okay.
I, yeah, we'll look at it again, I guess, I, I...
Well, if Denver's ready, we need to get on it.
Yeah, get, get, get this project wrapped up, absolutely, yeah. So we'll be more specific real soon, Mark, and, uh, yeah, I'm hoping to get topo yet this week, if not, next week, and then we'll, I'll talk to my engineer ahead of time.
Well, if you'd talked to Denver, is there any way that you can, you know, I don't know what the height of that thing's gonna be, but while their equipment's there, it, let's just say it was ten foot high. Ask me if Mark got, wanted to put it to fourteen or whatever, what the difference would be, while their equipment's there, what is, you know, the cost-wise, so that he would have an idea, so...
I, I think we'll need to get the quantity though, which won't take that much...
Find out how much material.
You'll have to work with.
Yes, exactly.
But at least it gives him a ballpark to put in.
And I guess, here's, here's my thought without going through a lot, is let's figure out what it's gonna take for excavation, and let's figure out what it's gonna take to not haul any of it off-site, just put it in a dam down, yeah. And that'd be the most, most efficient way to do it.
Right, right.
The only thing they'd have is some compaction on that material compared to...
The matter of cost of compacting.
Yeah.
Overthinking the cost of hauling it off, the cost of packing it would be the...
That's what I was just getting to, that's exactly what I was getting to, they have to pay to haul it, and that's expensive, so it might be a wash. So let's work with that, yeah.
All right, I, I want a phone call when your guys are gonna show up, so I can be out there with them.
Okay, good point.
All right.
Yeah, we, we'd like that, so... Yep, and I'll be talking to Jason today, maybe not till morning, because he's with his dad, but, um, no later than the morning, we'll be getting it scheduled.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark, appreciate your input very much.
All right, it's nine fifteen, at this time, we need to go out of drainage, we'll let Paul come in, then we'll finish up, and then we'll come back, we'll have a closed session, so I'll go back into drainage for that, so...
Mike, you gonna stick around?
Yeah, like, perfect, that'd be great, in fact, that'd be great.
Okay, motion to go out of drainage.
Someone?
In a second.
Thank you.
Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're out of drainage. Thanks, Eric.
You betcha. Yep.
Paul's out there, he's telling...
He went, he went in the office. You aren't here to ask to be taken off your board that we just approved you for.
Yeah, you're already on, we can go.
It's too late, it's too late.
You're late, I made the motion, I asked you, and I made the motion, you're, you're hooked.
It takes a thousand people in a petition to get you off.
You shouldn't get that. If, 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 if you talk about petition with something else, I don't have to do that much.
Yeah, too, too bad, do as many as you do it, so...
Kevin, I drove that road the other day when you called, and it seems like the high part of the ground is the worst.
What'd you think of that?
The muddy, I think I need some rock.
Okay, thanks, Pat.
So, it'd be more time to back in regular session.
I get along so well with the good city now, so maybe.
All right, Paul, you're up first, and you've got a couple vouchers here, so.
Good morning. Uh, yeah, we have actually three vouchers, they're all voucher number one, and you don't have them.
I don't.
No.
And you'll have them shortly.
Goodness.
Uh, as they were hot off the print, press, Saturday after, Saturday, Thursday afternoon. This is for our resurfacing projects, they're all three separate vouchers, they're all run and handled through the DOT, that's interesting. They give somebody two, 'cause I thought I had seven, let me steal hers for now. Huh. I gotta give, I got the originals, excuse me. Uh, what this represents for the most part is milling, uh, a couple of projects are close to complete, and the pavement scarification, voucher number one for Perrin sixty-four, Hardy West was completed, hundred percent on the milling, um, same with the South Road, P fifty-nine, Perrin sixty-six, so. The other one would be a partial payment, the third piece is from States to one sixty-nine, which as of this morning, they have about two days left. They've done the entire westbound lane from States, made the corner Friday, and they're probably just about to K Road right now, going back east, so. Um, but with that, it's got a little bit of surveying and then some mobilization, so, uh, um, the Perrin sixty-four, uh, the units completed adds up to about fifty-two thousand six hundred dollars. Uh, units completed on the Badger Road on Perrin sixty-six is about sixty thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars, and voucher number one is only seven or eight thou- seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven. Again, these are claims through the DOT, um, it's, used to be your signature was only required on the finals, it's required on every one of them now.
Sure.
I got three of them, three separate ones, we, we write the units completed, we send them to the DOT, the DOT pays them out of our farm-to-market, uh, farm-to-market allotment. Our STP portion of it, uh, is transferred to the farm-to-market internally at the DOT, so we don't see anything locally on these vouchers, but we have to approve them.
Okay.
All the milling done in Badger Road?
Yes, Badger and from State to Hardy, they're gonna, the rest of the story then, I'll go on, is, uh, we're trying to calibrate the plant, I believe, this morning at ten o'clock, and tomorrow morning they're gonna start at the county line, head north paving. So, uh, if they get two good days paving, they'll be skipping over to Hardy and starting there, uh, which would make that Friday morning.
Okay.
No, Thursday morning.
How many days does it take to do this?
Well, it'll take two days out here by Salzow.
About a mile and a half a day is what they can pave.
You still need three miles there, from the west county line to the-
There's three.
To the Thorby, uh, county?
Yep. So, they'll, they'll take two days, they'll have some hand pours up at the north intersection, um, and I'm not sure if they'll do that at the end of the day, depends on whether or not, what time they get done.
I, I got a question too, before you go. Uh, the mi- uh, what they've milled off, is that ours, or is that part of their contract?
No, this, this part, this time we had to make that available to the contractor. The contractor owns the millings and he is putting them, uh, on the Hodges plant site, uh, and they're holding them in the event they have a use for them in the future.
Is that all between them we're gonna worry about?
No, that's, that's why I asked you that question, I says I-
We, we provided a spot if they didn't have a home for it, and that was at the old landfill, and we were ready for them, and they still may come with some of it there if they don't have the room, just put some at the old landfill. Because it's a federal aid project and because it was over the equivalent of some number of federal aid, we couldn't keep it. We kept it before and we sent it off.
And we had other projects, yeah.
How did, how did, the suits kinda do it, 'cause they spread it along their shoulders and their road.
The millings?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of what they did, our first project-
Go up the Overton Road and they've got it from the westbound road on it.
Well, then they'd have to put it through a problem or whatever, and they'd have to size it and they could do that. What we did, the first project, remember more, we went on C twenty-six from Highway one sixty-nine to Bradgate, Iowa, we used the fifty-fifty mix of the millings and the, and the virgin material of rock, and found out that cost us more than just buying the rock at the quarry. And the bonus to that then was oil prices went up and all of a sudden the rock, we sold it, what, thirteen ha- well, excuse me, the millings, we sold it thirteen and a half bucks a ton, uh, sold it lock, stock and barrel, so it was a good deal for us, and we were intended on keeping them again, because then we could either use it or sell, or sell it if somebody was interested in it, uh, but with federal aid rules and requirements, we can't keep, uh, yeah, it's-
You work it down.
No, we get, uh, as, as the oil goes down, it's got less of a value, but when you add six hundred dollars a ton on oil and you add six percent oil, each one of those, uh, tons, uh, had a value, and thirty-some dollars a ton, and we got half of that roughly.
And didn't they try and mix that right with the, with the Megan brought up?
Sure, yeah, we did that. We did that on this last project where we went, we used a big share of it on Chantlin Road and over on, on the Church Road or south of Thor- excuse me, south of Hardy going east, uh-
The Church Road.
Yeah, what is it, C whatever?
I don't know, it's the Church Road.
Not C twenty-six, it's, uh, C thirty, I don't, should know that.
I should, I drove it twenty years.
Should quiz me on that. Don't know the road numbers.
I'm on the street, don't you?
Yeah, you don't know the numbers, though.
Anyway, that's what we have, uh, before you for agendas, is voucher one, one and one for Perrin sixty-four, sixty-six and sixty-seven. The last one's the STP project, um, the first two are farm-to-market only, all of them, it would be approved, the units completed, uh, we have our cheat sheet show you the approximate dollars, and it should be pretty close, but there's always rounding errors on this.
Do you have a motion on each one of these individuals?
I don't care how you handle it, as long as you sign it, they'll pay it.
All right.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion for all three projects to be approved for payment. I'll second them.
Do we have a motion and a second on the three vouchers presented this morning, for paying all of them, David?
All right.
All right. Before we leave that then, you know that letter that was sent out? Could I have some copies of that, leave them in the elevator for people that are residents that, you know, didn't have property, they'd like to have that, and then, um, I'll see if I can get them from here, whatever I need to do.
Okay.
And, uh, I bet, you know, I get a few questions and I explain to them kinda how it's gonna go and how long it's gonna take and my, you know, how long they could be shut down. Uh, and this morning, I mean, Kathy Cross called and she did, she had to go to work and she can still get out, you know, on the, where it's been ground, which did those, um, trucks come pretty fast through the curves there, and she said she had pretty close to it, the guy got over, she was over, but she got over the shoulder, the guy did get over and didn't hit her, but I don't know if there's nothing-
This morning, the trucks were coming through? The trucks are west of Highway, or west of K Road?
She met one this morning, she was-
But, kinda how they're hauling-
Well, they were empty once parked in Hardy.
Oh, they were just coming, they were very coming.
She was going to work, yeah. There were a bunch of those guys staying at Fort Dodge, I met the whole convoy of Minat trucks the other morning headed this way, all empty.
Don't know.
Maybe they hadn't ever projected around.
Oh, they got a lot of projects. Uh, we don't have fifteen trucks, so it wasn't all here, so, uh, we have, we have a lot of, uh, John Zag has several trucks, we have a farmer over west, uh, that's got several and a lot of contract haulers on this.
There is.
But, but we're gonna end up at the bridge for Cross, these, uh, at some point, we're taking the approaches out.
Yeah.
And so-
That'll be a few days.
Got to do everything.
And that will be, the, and we'll find out more in the scheduling, but we assume that they'll pave on up, because they have to run their mix all the way over the bridge, until they get everything east of the bridge done, they'll leave, leave them alone, they think, and they'll pull them right when they get up to it.
Oh, they, when they're approaching it from the east side, they'll pull everything.
And then, uh, set up and pave, and they'll have that wide open and gap, and then we'll have to get cure.
It's gonna take a little longer.
We'll have to get cure and then we can pour the concrete.
Yeah.
And we'll know what cure will be after we get running, as to what maturity is gonna be for this time of the year, as to how long it'll take.
How long it is, the drying, okay.
So, uh, you know, last time we had it something at over two days, um, time before that was a hair longer, even though it was warmer, don't know, it's all with the mix and the flash and the part.
Hardy and northwest, is what you're thinking.
I think so. They gotta work toward the plant, 'cause they're gonna back in and-
Sure, that makes sense too.
Okay.
Okay, that'll help.
Um, the more we know and we'll keep feeding people information, and, and, uh, I talked to Kenny, the, the pavements superintendent this morning pulled in as I was leaving, um, they've moved in to God Farke Campground pretty well, and, uh, and he's going tomorrow and after today's, and after we get more going, we'll know more about it.
And it's nice to know some local guys get some of this money. Johnny Zag and the guys home, stuff.
Yep, no, it's, uh, a couple farmers have some beautiful trucks in here and a side dump, so, it wasn't heavily leased, but it was, it was closed, so. But, uh, anyway, that's done, second order of business is approve application for construction in county right away from David Zauk to connect to an existing tile intake near the southeast corner of C twenty and Highway fifteen intersection. Looking back at the records, there's a tile here that says placed intake, this is nineteen fifty-nine, placed intake, three foot of six, six inch connecting tile, laid ninety foot of six inch tile across the road, have no idea where it goes to and nor does the DOT for sure. This outlet is, uh, this corner, it's, uh, there's not a lot, Mr. Zauk wants the tile to it, naturally he can get under ten acres to it, but it's a corner he wants to deal with, there's an intake there, he wants to connect to it, and historically we've had problems with the intake, 'cause the tile's about this shallow, it's a big wide blister in the ditch, I mean, it's a maintenance, it, in other words, we're telling him it's not necessarily a good outlet, and he knows that, um, hopefully he ran some water in it to see if it takes it. Uh, one of the things I recommend it is to just take his, uh, supply tank for his sprayer or whatever, and he said, oh, sure he'll do that, um, because I'm skeptical. I have a meeting with the DOT finally at, uh, one o'clock this afternoon, um, before this is, we'll approve it with, pending DOT approval.
Okay.
The DOT wants to know what's going on here, they don't know where this goes. Uh, it's, it's right there, uh, technically it's where he wants to hook is ours, and it's within ten feet of being DOT right away, you know, so, any issues to ten feet of it or more are ours, and then from there on, it's all DOT's, and, uh, that's why they need to know what's going on here a little bit, if we know what's going on. But otherwise, um-
Did you explain to him if it's no good under that highway, him trying to fix is gonna be tough?
Yeah, and for six acres, uh, is it worth, yeah, you look at the natural-
Can I just explain to him that the DOT is what he's gonna work with?
Even the natural drainage, the ditch slopes two hundred feet away on C twenty go the other way, so there isn't a lot that comes towards him, but again, uh, he can, I'm recommending he can hook to it, and it's a limited number of acres, and the problem we have with the intake is related to the shallow depths, I'm sure, uh, roots and everything in the problem. But, uh, I'd recommend it, uh, pending, uh, approved pending the DOT review and approval.
All right.
I don't think that moves you.
Mark, is there a second?
Would it like Paul said, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Sending out all the data?
All right.
Okay.
Uh, we're supposed to get off, this winter delivered Thursday.
Good, no.
Good, guys?
Yes, I do. Do you have a long work session after this or not?
Um, no.
Uh, we're gonna have a closed session.
Paul, before you go, he might explain why I voted the way I voted yesterday night, I didn't understand the combination of trail money and road money. A hundred thousand dollar pot to go six counties?
Yes.
Should be in it, make it with counties.
It was alternative, uh, um, it's an alternative fund source, which the region has the choice of earmarking it or having it towards any, uh-
Any project.
Any project, for instance, uh-
So, page is following you?
Uh, no, just that, that will work. Uh, the back page is preferred, but I know we've done the front page before too. Um, and from the engineer's side of it, on the TAC, uh, the advisory committee to the full board is comprised of engineers, city engineer and a city manager, so our priorities are to maintain roads. Uh, the next above us, the people that review us are development, uh, the Alyssa Reinhardt, for instance, the development commissions, city clerks and otherwise, and they have a different, they're looking at enhancement or quality of life issues, we're looking at quality of road. And, uh, our recommendations to the TAC was to put, our recommendations from the TAC to the general board was to put all you can into roads or infrastructure, uh, in our six county region, and, uh, and take that money, the, the feds used to have it dedicated, but now they said it, it doesn't have to be. In other words, you had a choice, put it toward anything that's eligible for federal aid funding or to bike trails. And we wanted to, our recommendation was to put it to anything. Say, uh, say, uh, Calhoun County has an intersection issue with Highway twenty, uh, with the ramps or whatever, and it's good for the reason, you know, then that's an eligible function. Our project right here, our STP is paid through the, through the region, the, I believe we have eight hundred thousand of that project is paid through it. So, our recommendation to the board was to make this money available, uh, for all projects within the region, as opposed to just narrowing the scope to bike-
And the reason I voted the other way, Paul, was I, I could, I guess I was kinda selfish for Humboldt County, 'cause I could see a hundred thousand dollars to put for six county, didn't opt too much for roads, but there's a possibility we get several hundred thousand for trails, all that money allocated strictly to Humboldt County.
And, and the sad thing is, is Humboldt County before this program came along had different funding sources, but their trails were already developed, you can't get any funds for Three Rivers Trail out of this, unless you're gonna add new trails. Wow.
Can we change what you got and build more?
Yep, yep, yep.
I got a question for you, Paul, uh, the other day I got a call from Kentucky Avenue, um, yeah, I mean, it was real muddy and, and black, kinda looking to me when I drove it, and, uh, they said Gary Hall shoot out there and check it over, and he reported back to him, but I think Dave was supposed to go out this morning, have you heard anything?
I'm not sure where this was at, in general, uh-
Looks like it just needs some rock, hold on, but I, right now, I, I imagine a truck of rock would tear it up pretty much.
Well, and that's what, we're hauling rock in full force right now, and we're trying to haul the roads that are in decent shape, that we don't ruin hauling the rock to them. Um, we have some that are still tender and fragile, and all's we trying to do is continue to blade them and trying to maintain them in the best way we can. Some of the roads, we've made commitments, obviously, to work later on in the summer with those, where we'll core the middle and whatever, uh, which we try to do every year if we can, uh, and, and we will continue on with coring those out. Southern Pine Avenue, we'll core the middle out of that, pull the ditches up and, and then add rock. If it's still pumping, if it's still soft, uh, I have hesitation of putting any rock on it, because all's it takes is one heavy load that thinks the road's good, and then all of what you did is gone in vain, it's all mixed with the mud. We had requests already to rock south of Bradgate in that floodplain area where it's been closed for a month, uh, but, uh, it's holding, we can blade it now without losing the tires on the, uh, motor patrol, but, uh, I, I don't know that it's suitable to rock yet.
I have driven quite a, quite a few gravel roads that same day, and there was, you could see where there's been a frostbowl or two in places, but this is the worst road I've seen.
So, where is it?
On Kentucky Avenue, Kentucky going north.
From where?
South from, uh, Kevin's Hoax at it.
Oh, on that, on that, wow, yeah, no, we, we just keep bleeding.
It looks like it needs some rock on it.
Yeah, I'll keep working it, same thing on the south end of Florida, south of Tommy's, uh, that's, pulled that in, um, that was, I drove that- That was, I drove that yesterday morning slowly with a four-wheel drive pickup.
Got one out of Avery, Florida Avenue two, out in, out by Harold Melissis.
Dave, I haven't been on that, but I'm sure we have.
I know that they've-
That's cold breeze.
They've got some issues out there that it's similar to the way you've talked, and they called me the other day in absent, I said, I'd bring it up. But we're just waiting for it to dry up.
We keep maintaining it and keeping firm up, and then, especially where we pulled them in, we wanna work that back and forth, get that firmed up before we rock it. Otherwise, instead of this much of schmush, we'll add, have that thick of schmush if it isn't firmed up yet. It, the rain'll help it, and drives, drives off the fines and later on, so.
It's just been a bad spring in the winter, I think.
Yeah, it hasn't been a bad.
My road's never been this bad. Ten years, it's had worse conditions.
I haven't got a job right here. I was on the car wash to go to Kentucky Avenue three hundred and fifty ninth, sixty. I would like to invite each one of your supervisors to please, go to the car wash, retribute with nice and clean, not drag on Hundred Fifty thousand, Hundred Fifty Street. For some reason, which I have none, absolutely no idea why, the maintenance went by this morning, we have now a two to two and a half foot high window of dirt, not rock and dirt, but dirt in the middle of that road. It's now getting moved from the south side to the north side. So, for whatever reason, after we had whatever amount of rain we had, there was an inch, two inches of rain, we decided to go out now, the first day of sunshine, even though the road's still sloppy and soggy and wet, and we're gonna take a move, dirt around. We had one of the nicer gravel roads in the county. We now have a road that's gonna cost the county a lot of money, because I've been told we're gonna rock it. I don't know if I'll live long enough to see enough rock on that road to make it a decent road again. Because right now, it takes a four-wheel drive pickup, and about twenty-five miles an hour will stop you, boys. I had to go to my south hog site on Friday, that's why I gave Mort a call. I about got stuck in four places on Kentucky Avenue. This was all done on the aspect of, we have to make sure the road drains. I've lived in my current house for forty years. In those forty years I've lived down that road, 'cause I've lived at my folks's house for six mil, between where I live now and my folks's place has been over sixty years. I've been on that road a lot. There's been one time, and one time only, there was ever water on Kentucky Avenue between Hundred Fiftyth and Hundred Sixtieth. A bass from Bloody Run Creek came out of its banks and flooded the county's bridge. But yet, we tail up a road that was a decent road on the aspect of, we have to make it, make sure water gets off it. Water's never sealed that road in sixty years, except on top of your bridge. And now it's a muddle. I've got a farm drive that runs from my folks's acreage back to my hog site that is in far better shape than what your road is right now. So, my question is, supposedly, rock is supposed to be hauled on these. Sooner it would be a hell of a lot better than later. The frostbite you're talking about on Ford Avenue Bruce, I know exactly what it's at. I saw a school bus just about going to ditch trying to avoid it. But nothing's being done. I know the board has a, and I know, Paul, I'm starting to take you to task on this. But somebody needs to be held responsible, somebody needs to be held accountable for this. When you talk to anybody that runs a maintainer, all you hear from the answer is, I don't know, I don't know. I've called that conversation with Paul. Ninety-five percent of conversations are, I don't do that, I don't know who authorized that. Well, somebody needs to know who's authorizing these people go out and tear roads up.
Paul, any comment?
No comment.
Okay. All right, let's move on. We got proposals in front of us, I'm prepared.
Looking for the permit, Paul, the work in the right-of-way permit. I thought I handed it-
They handed it back to you.
I handed it back to me.
Oh, yeah, it was kinda hot.
Give me mine.
Uh, no, I have all kinds of documentation with it right here. Did you get this signed, Mr. Lee?
I didn't.
That's what I mean.
Back to you, I'm sorry.
No comment is because, no comment is warranted, how does that sound?
Tell us about three miles, Josh, a hundred, a thirty thousand bucks.
Uh, the transmission, the high-speed transmissions out on the rubber tire excavators, and that was for information. I had a quote done, we finally got them up to look at this thing, we knew we had trouble going down the road with it. Low-speed side will get you a half a walking speed, and high-speed, if you have any load on it, you have trouble getting from A to B. That's the problem. The first two lines would probably take care of that part of it. The rest of it, it would be trying to bring this thing back from twenty-five years of service, to bring it back into alignment. Some of it's sloppy.
Yeah, what is the value of the machine and the condition it's in?
Not a lot. I, I don't know, I wouldn't, there's a good, I don't know. Because if it's got thirty thousand dollars of repair that Kat wants to put in, is it worth ten or fifteen?
That's what I would do.
That's the question.
That's what I would say. I mean, thirty thousand's probably worth more than the machine at this point. It's only, as I wrote on the top of this, it's nineteen ninety-one model, it's got sixty-five hundred and twenty-nine hours of it as of the end of the year. I don't have a current, we have several hundred on it since then, so we're probably in the sixty-seven hundred range right now.
Would thirty thousand buy a lot more time on it, or something else could happen next year?
Well, in theory, in theory, what they did is put everything in on any, on any of the sloppiness. They're gonna bore and hone any of the linkage in it and things like that, most of those bottoms items. But the top two, remove and install transmission, drive more rear differential and recondition the transmission. Those two are given.
They would add, like, they'd have to make it functional, and the other ones-
But you're only getting a reconditioned transmission, and with a year warranty on it.
Yeah. No, what, what the, the other end of the spectrum is to replace it in kind is something at two hundred thousand plus or minus. And to go one size bigger would be another twenty to thirty thousand, two thirty to two forty.
That thirty thousand, that doesn't include the labor?
No, no, that's everything. Thirty should have, have everything. Then you'd end up with a twenty-five-year-old machine with a motor with sixty-five hundred hours on it. I wanted to know that, and I don't have, I wanted to have some discussion on it sometime as to what to go from here. There's-
So, is this the oldest machine you got?
This is the rubber tire excavator. We have the, the, the zero tail swing, or that minimum tail swing, the MSR link belt is, what, a two thousand five, two thousand six, somewhere? Were you here when we bought it? Yeah. That's the smaller one, that's on tracks, that's the thirty-some thousand pound machine that we haul on that tandem trailer. This is the rubber tire excavator, the larger. The limitations on this are about a thirty-inch pipe. If we were to buy new, I would probably consider the next machine up for a little more leverage.
You gotta hold it for twenty-five years again.
Well, on the other hand, this hasn't cost us much for twenty, twenty years either.
It cost you, well, you got two hundred and seventy-six hours a year roughly.
Right.
And it, if you do put these repairs into it, it's about a hundred bucks an hour.
We did put-
For that one year.
For one year. We did put ten thousand in it, and I thought it was just a few years ago, and that proved to be five years ago.
What was that in, the motor or the pins, or?
Uh, it was hydraulics.
Hydraulics again.
It was in, in the hydraulics.
It's been good, it's pretty good.
Uh, the, the actual motor itself has been, yeah, that's been fine.
What's that worth if you don't do any to it, Paul?
I'd say in the ten, fifteen thousand, it'd be my guess, somebody would buy it and then try to fix it on their own or whatever, don't.
But then again, for thirty thousand dollars, you get the same job done with a two hundred and forty thousand dollar machine.
Well-
Well, it's a two hundred, hour, two hundred and fifty hours a year. I don't know.
I don't, yeah. That's where I wanted to think about it a little bit and have some thought.
I don't do that much digging.
No, that's what I'm saying.
The, the other thing is, if you bought a new machine, do you add auxiliary hydraulics on it, for instance, so you can use it for something else? There's a multitude of things.
How big a machine do you give it?
Right, there's two sizes here. The size we have are the next size bigger that you can get as a rubber tire excavator. But you can get brush cutter heads.
There's all kinds of fun toys.
You know, I mean, we can reach-
Brush cutter, anybody else does.
Well, you can reach the back slopes on some of these side roads.
They'll blow the brush off and-
And, and even the trails, you know.
That's true.
Don't know, and I haven't talked to Mr. Lee, but there's some pop, you know, anything that we're buying for machinery and anything he's buying for machinery, we try to talk together to see if there's-
Mutual use.
If there's something, you know, buying auxiliaries allows us to, to use it more than two hundred and fifty hours. You know, the hours of these machines comes with what kind of fall we have. Our major use is in the fall, once crops come out and go. We were using it hot and heavy now, and now it's not even left the place. The other machine is not going today, but I think will start tomorrow again. But I don't know, I wanted to give you that quote, and then we need to think about it and pick a direction somewhere.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet.
Digest that. Okay.
Linda, make that next slide.
Linda, pop right up. I'm gonna sleep last, though.
Well, I don't think so.
Not today. Not today.
Okay.
Hold it up.
Yes, I have for you guys to approve our two thousand fifteen applications for business property tax credits. The two thousand fif-